I'll say recording and then you can get rid of that. So we're recording.
Good.
Good.
Thanks.
Just got to remember to stop later, thank you.
Okay, so I will call this Public Site and Building Commission regular meeting to order at seven oh three. Please join me in the pledge. On here. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States.
To the public.
For which stands one nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. So just so everyone knows, Catherine's not here tonight. Jolene. Tucker from the building department is filling in and. We had some technical difficulties. It wasn't Jolene. It was the technical stuff Jack had to kind of reboot something. So now we're here and I think we're good to go. Here in the room, we have public site members Jeff Baclemba. Dave Resendas, Tom Cardillo and Roger Young and me Nancy Ryan in your chair. And then Dave Horvath is up on the. The Google Meet screen, Dr. Carver, Board of Ed, Tyler Stevens, our facilities manager. Rick Davido from STV. Our project manager. And I think we're going to hear hopefully a lot of good things from Rick tonight. So but first we'll do, we don't have public input unless somebody wants to be the public. Or correspondence. So I'll, we'll do the meeting minutes, then we'll jump into the old business. So I will make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of March 12, 2025. Second, Roger seconds. Does anybody have any input on that or changes that need to be made? I think everything looks good. All in favor? I opposed, done, and everybody who's here was here. So I don't think anybody needs to abstain. So that's a good thing. Okay. So our high school HVAC upgrade. I know that Rick's been quite busy with coordination meetings, et cetera, moving things along. And Rick, if you want to give us start, let us know how all that went and where we're going.
Sure. So. Number of things happened. So we had SES as far as our commissioning agent onboard. So I did reach out to SES. After our last meeting, spoke with the project manager, Do Tuk Sperry. And we, you know, discussed moving forward in the project with them. I hooked them up with Colerunen with John. And got them to send over some plans and the submittals. So even though a lot of the submittals have already been approved, they, you know, by contract with the town are going to be reviewing that. Just making sure that all the, all the deliverables are, are done with everything that's being ordered. So, so, so that's been moving on, just working, working well. Secondly, the, as we mentioned last time, the sampling came back. We have verbal approval from the, from the state based on the, the letter. I don't have anything in writing. Back from Save More, I've asked them for that and I've been in touch with Dr. Carver. And so we've been trying to, to get that from them, just so we have the, the record of it and we can, once I get that, I can post it on the website. To kind of move that forward.
So who would that come directly to? Who should it come to?
That would have come to Save More's consultant who submitted that.
Okay.
Nancy, I just want, I just want a copy of it. I told Rick, I just want a copy of it because I have to then notify. The families, like there's notification that pieces. So I just want to have it on record before I start notifying families that we're going to be engaging in the asbestos abatement.
Right. So there will be another notification letter going out. The first one did go out saying that the, the abatement will be happening. However, there needs to be another one to go out and with the dates. So with the state, they have 60 days, which is what they estimated. Not how long it will take, but how long they, they have to, to make the abatement, to clear the abatement. So they needed specific dates. So I received that from Save More today. Christine, you, you received that email, correct?
I did.
The dates, the dates on that are April 22nd through June 20th. So now Dr. Carver will construct that letter. I'll get a sample of it. They need it as well for the record. And once that letter goes out. You know, all our, all our bases will have been covered at that point to move forward. So I know we spoke with Tyler at the meeting and I know he wanted to have the abatement after a couple of weeks because of things going on at the high school. And with the scheduling for the abatement contractor, those were the dates that, that came back from Save More. So. We're kind of moving forward on that.
Correct. Just to be clear on that. I'm not trying to hold Save More up if, if and when they're ready to move. I was just stating that it, it makes coordinating, closing off areas of the building easier. If that works with their timeline when they had said two weeks.
Yeah. And they, because you asked them without, without, you would ask them what their dates were without. You know, speaking about, you know, that it would be beneficial to you, but as it turns out, it does kind of work out. So then we did talk to them about working in, on, on the. Upcoming spring break. Okay. So they're going to be working during the day. So we don't have to, because the, the custodians, they were doing this anyway. But the custodians typically don't work in the evenings during the break. So they'll be there during the day. So no overtime. And then that Friday is Good Friday and we're not holding them up because we were told a bunch of their subcontractors have that day off anyway. Okay. So it's not hurting our schedule any by, by not coming in on that Friday. Okay. And speaking of schedule, so we did have a coordination meeting, which I'll kind of get into later because it lastly, because might have more conversation. But there, based on the coordination meeting that we had, some answers that we. Provided, some other, other things that we need to still speak about further. But I have asked Save More by the end of this week to provide an updated schedule. To make sure that, you know, we're, we're still not pushing schedule out, but you know, some of the upfront. Items. Have, haven't quite met the date. You know, we didn't start the abatement three weeks ago, the way it was, the way it was on the schedule. Not to say it's going to hold it up, but I just want to make sure that we have a good schedule that we can track to moving forward. So now that, you know, we're answering their questions, he should have the, the information he needs to provide us with a, with a, a pretty solid schedule. Any questions on that?
Um, but just back to the abatement.
Yep.
That you had said that at the last meeting that. I think it was the air quality testing that was done just as a. You know, that part of them trying to get the letter, et cetera, came back good.
Correct.
So air quality, but there's actually, are there, so there is stuff that's going to need to be carried away. And that's what the whole Panoni review is about. Those subcontractors, all the things they're going to do. So there's going to be materials.
Correct.
Be carried away and taken care of in a proper manner, correct?
Correct. And that was the Panoni review. So Tyler had submitted that off to Panoni. They did respond. They, we've sent it back to Save More. There are only a few things that they needed to kind of more of a clarification and, and have for record. Which we're waiting for a response from them on before they, before they can, you know, abate. So the next week or so, we hope to have that response and then that would be settled.
And hopefully that'll all get in place so that you can go further with the work that's going to be done during spring break.
Correct. Yeah. Well, we would want all that taken care of before we even start the abatement.
Right.
Right. To do any of the abatement, because when, you know, when we're doing, they want to know the air quality, but also, you know, the, the. You know, the hard materials that need to be taken away need to be done properly, obviously. So we want to make sure we get, we get all that before they get on, on site with, with any kind of abatement.
So and then to be clear, the Panoni review is done or it's still being done?
No, it's done. They've sent it back. The Panoni reviews, the entire piece is sent back. We just need to get their response and make sure that, you know, they've complied with it a hundred percent and then we should be good to go.
And then they have to, somebody has to let. Save More's contractors, you let Save More know, Save More lets their contractor know. So everything's in place and ready to go.
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
All right.
Thanks. Yep.
All right. Uh, yes, that was next on my list with Panoni, waiting on schedule, SES. Okay. So lastly, you know, things have been moving along because we haven't started the abatement doesn't mean that we haven't been doing any work. They've been in the ceilings. Tyler, you can attest that they've been, they've been there every day, jumping the ceiling and putting up hangers and finding pathways and moving forward. So it's not like nothing's been happening onsite. And in, in their discovery, as I think I mentioned last meeting, that there was some conflicts on the, on the plans. So we did have a meeting with Colerunen, myself, Tyler, the principal. One of Save More's ductwork contractors onsite and Dave was onsite as well. Just to kind of walk through, we had plans with notes on them and we went through each and every piece in question that they had. And some of them were very simple. Okay. They're, you know, it's a matter of flattening out some ductwork, making it a little wider to accommodate, to accommodate different areas. So there were, you know, a number of things that we, we took, you know, care of onsite. There's a couple of areas that they thought they would need to lower ceilings because of sprinkler pipe heights. In many areas, we've kind of. Took care of that. One area that there was a chase going in. So they're able to put the ductwork in the chase, things along those lines. There are a few areas that we're going to need to move some sprinkler lines just to be able to get the pathway. Because the, the heights there just don't work. So there might be a little bit of a shutdown we're going to need to do, move some, move some sprinkler pipes. But that being said, we don't have to move sprinkler heads, which is a lot of work. Within the ceiling tiles, we don't have to lower the ceilings as they thought we might. So that, that, that was all good news. But there, you know, there is a little, little bit of work there. So. We do have one beam that we need to, 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 you know, either go over, go under, figure out a way around that. But Color, Coloronin's already working on that with, and Tyler's had some great input on that as well. You know, how we might be able to go up and either go through the roof or come down through a, through a, a fan. Pathway that we're going to be abandoning anyway. So we're looking at all those areas just to see the, you know, the best way to save money. So they're, you know, kind of, Save More is doing a good job with, with Tyler and with. John from Coloronin, you know, trying to, trying to save money where we can. So, you know, hopefully we got a wash on this or just, you know, you know, a possible slight change order. But we're not, we're not moving forward with change orders yet. We're just, you know, kind of seeing what we can do and investigating. So what we, what we talked about in memorializing this meeting, because you know, you, you know, what is it during a walk around? Everybody's talking to each other and you want to make sure that you can capture everything. So Save More is going to be issuing RFIs. To. To Coloronin, just to make sure they have all their questions on record. And then Coloronin is going to be submitting their responses. And if there's something that, you know, we can't. Get around as an easy workaround, that's going to be a change order. They're going to have to price it before we can approve it, obviously. So. But there was nothing that we really saw, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was outlandish or anything that was going to be, that we could understand as being, you know, a big ticket item.
And nothing we see as being hugely impactful at this point. There, that one section where we have a. Add an expansion joint, there's a solid concrete beam that's blocking the proposed pathways for the ductwork. But as Rick mentioned, we think that there's an alternative route to come in from the roof through to existing. Roof penetrations for exhaust fans that are going to be abandoned. I was able to provide Coloronin with dimensions on those existing penetrations. They think they're going to work. They had to do a little bit more due diligence. Just for the sake of note, because we have a lot of Davids on that walkthrough with David Belcourt. Not, not any of the Davids from Public Site and Building Committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah. So then I'm, I will say that I had been in contact with Rick, because a number of you said that you wanted to be able to. Meet with Rick, be onsite at some point to kind of see work happening or what was going to be happening, proposed, et cetera. And when. Color both, Save More was pointing out some things to Coloronin and through Rick about potential issues that they saw. Rick made the decision and I agreed that that coordination meeting that happened onsite with Tyler and others. Needed to be focused on that. And that another time would be better to have a meeting where anyone who's interested in seeing what's going on up there. Couldn't be present and, and go through some things with Rick. So I think that worked out best. They, you met most recently on Monday, correct? Just like two days ago.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. And thanks for clarifying that Nancy, because I'd be happy to meet anyone out there to, you know, small group, what, what have you to, to, you know, see what's going on. But this just wasn't that meeting. They just needed, really needed to concentrate at, on the issues at hand and, and solutions even, even more importantly. So.
Right. And it sounded like initially that there could be, you know, issues that needed. Bigger kind of. Changes as far as solving them. Now it's sounding much more like there's lots of workarounds that can happen, or there just needed to be clarification. From Coloronin to Save More, or Save More saying, can we do it this way instead of that way?
Exactly.
Trying to save money and not having a lot of changeovers. So.
Yeah. So there, there might be, you know, might be some small things here and there, but you know, it's. Some of the things were just coordinating the, the two floors, right? Where they thought one might have been to lower a ceiling or make a soffit. We, we realized that there was, there was actually a chase being built there anyway. So we were able to say, you know, it was a non-issue because that chase is going in. So it doesn't matter how low that duct's going to be in that area. So things along those lines. But you know, there are some things that we were able to, I think, avert lowering ceilings, which is a good thing. But there, there will be some sprinkler pipes that will need to be moved, you know, to, which will. Need to shut down at some point later in the year.
Okay.
Anybody have any further questions?
Well, I'm wondering if they're going to be starting to do. Some work during spring break, was it, which is mid-April. If there's any time, and this is just sort of throwing it out there, we don't have to make a plan right now, but sort of think about. If there's a time, Rick, when you're planning to be onsite. When it might be a good time for anyone who wants to take a look to make some arrangements to do that.
Yeah. Maybe what I'll do is I'll, with the next, maybe later this week or the following, early next week. Cause I am, one of, one of the items I had, I'm actually going to be out from the second to the 11th. So I won't be here at the next meeting, but I'll probably have Mark Duprice step in for me at that meeting. But yeah, so what I'll do is something once, once I get back, I'll try to set up a meeting before I go. So give people plenty of notice. And if somebody would want to attend, we can kind of, you know, go through it and, and show everybody what's happening.
Or so the next meeting would be the ninth. You're saying you're going to be away.
Correct.
School break is 13 through 19. Is that true? Yeah. So if you're around then and you're going to be in town, maybe one day checking on things, that might be a time. Since there's work going, if it's not going to be in the way of the work happening. For people to be able to make arrangements to stop in.
Yeah. And I don't know with everybody else's work schedule, what's better for them, but that, that would work for me. I can make that work for sure.
Okay. We have, we have got plenty to figure that out. And then, and thanks for letting us know about the next meeting and having someone fill in. Mark or Geraldine or it works out best for.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have anything, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um. The problems that you guys are running into right now, is this for the entire project or is this just part of this first phase?
Uh, no, they're, they're going through and doing a lot of discovery for the entire project. So this is on the. Predominantly the issues, the major issues are on the third floor. So not, not as much on the second floor, but we did, we did walk, you know, both floors, kind of looking at, at the entire piece. You know, they're going through their pathways. They're doing their due diligence now, you know, trying to find any discovery now. So. We, we should be in pretty good shape after these, these meetings.
Okay. So the RFI process will be basically a one-time process?
Well, there's always RFIs. I can't say that there won't be any future RFIs, but as far as, you know, the, the major, major conflicts they, they can see now. That will be. You know, moving forward, they'll, they'll be the predominant, the predominant force will be coming, coming up shortly.
Okay.
And, and this phase actually that, that Coloronin is calling phase three. Of the whole entire high school HVAC upgrade. Is the money that was approved at referendum. Based on the grant that we received from the state and the money that the town is matching with. So there are other phases of that, of the HVAC upgrade that. Hopefully will continue to happen in the future. Let's get through this one and then. See about, I mean, there's already phase one and two that were completed, not through us. Not through the building committee. There was rooftop units that were replaced and some other things. I don't know the all details of that. If you need to know, we can find Tyler or Dr. Carver to tell us.
Yeah, the origin.
Go ahead.
Do you want to know? Or you want me to be quiet?
So I was just thinking like this is phase three, but there's phases within this phase, right? They're not doing. So I didn't know if you looked at, say, three classrooms and you're running through these problems, then you're going to then have similar problems in the next three classrooms. Or you're trying to.
No, they're up and they're, they're going up and down the halls and, and on both floors. So this, it's, you know, kind of the, the entire project.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So yeah, everything that's inside this phase is being looked at so that, you know, they don't go and start throwing. Ductwork or whatever in place and then finding out in two weeks, we got to change it and put it over here. They're trying to get through the whole process. Yeah. Okay.
Right. Because they know, they know, need to know what to order, right? Right? What sizes to order and things like that. You know, the plan is great, but once you get, you know. Like Coloronin couldn't get in every, every ceiling tile and look through every, every little piece. So, you know, there are some things that pop up in typical projects like this. So. That's where the conflicts come in, into being. All right. I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. I'm turning my microphone on. Hello?
Are you?
All right.
All right. Are you on?
We lost it. They're back.
What they're doing now is.
Okay. But they're not saving. Okay. All right. So we're still recording. Yes. We're still recording. Thank you. We just, we just lost you and then now you're back.
Yeah.
And you can hear us, right?
Yes.
So.
You should get on that because that has like all. They, they haven't updated it yet. There's still some issues, but at least it gives a somewhat.
It's back. Yeah. Yeah. Don't stop the recording.
No, I wasn't stopping it. It did by itself.
Yeah. No, it's recording.
It keeps going in. Yeah. It keeps going in and out of the internet here.
Yeah. So we're connected to the town internet, but somehow it keeps going in and out.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah. So I think, you know, what Rick was saying basically is they're just trying to move through. The whole scope of this phase of the project to make sure that. What's drawn can be done. Do things need to get moved? That's what the FRIs would be so that, or RFIs would be. So that Save More has. Written verification that if we move this over here or we're going this way and all of that. So that they don't start doing stuff. But like Rick said, first of all, they've got to order stuff. They've already ordered a bunch of stuff that's sitting in the yard somewhere. I think we talked about that last time. Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions or do you guys have any other comments? Because the only other thing we have is an invoice. So we can do that if there's nothing else. Yeah. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve STV invoice number nine zero zero three, three, seven, three, nine. Dated March 14th, 2025. For services rendered through February.
Second it.
What, and in the amount of $5,733, David Horvath, second. I have a question for Rick, which he probably doesn't know the answer to, but. This brings us about halfway through your contract amount.
Correct. Yeah. I think it was 45,000 on that.
Well, so the contract amount is 96. Five ninety-one and we're at 49, five fifty-three. So that's just a little over half. And I guess I need to have you or whoever look at that and make sure we're going to be okay going forward. Because this, we could possibly go out to September. We're supposed to be done by October.
Right.
That's still another six months almost.
Right. So that would be, all right. Yeah. Let me talk to Mark. Let me talk to Mark on that. So that would be, you know, if it was five thousand, six months would be 30,000, right?
Yeah. So there, there was a lot that went on sort of early on with contracts and stuff with Geraldine. And between Geraldine and Melanie. And so no, we don't, we don't have to do with that anymore. It's more construction administration now. And you. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're going to be good with that. We don't want to change order, have a lot of contingency.
Right. Yeah. I'll, I'll check with Mark on that and we can get back to.
Great. Okay. So now we're going to vote on this. If any, I'll say, that's the other question. All in favor? I opposed, done, thank you. So I think that should be it for. The, this project. And Rick, again, if you're definitely not going to be here on the ninth, and if we do need to have a meeting. We want to make sure that somebody. Is here giving us an update, especially if it's updates that we need to know specific information on, just in case there are issues, et cetera.
Correct. Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll vet that all out and I'll get in touch with, with you Nancy and just to make sure we understand who, who's going to be there.
Yeah. And, and if it's just kind of moving along, business as usual, and you just need to give a quick update, that's great. We don't need to have a meeting. We won't have a meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
So good with high school stuff. So Tyler, Rick, thank you so much. Dr. Carver already dropped off. We have a couple of other things on our agenda, which we're going to.
Bye all. Thank you.
Go through. Thank you, Rick. Dave Horvath, don't go away.
I'm not.
Right. So moving into the municipal center locker room renovation, I. Got an email later or late afternoon from Jay, from BMP. And they are the, I'm going to try to put this up on the screen just because it's. I printed a couple of copies, but we have been waiting for. Um, let's see. Here it is. Uh, I don't want that. I don't know what to do. Okay. So just hang on a second. So the municipal center locker room. Project, we've been. Kind of working on this back and forth a bit for a while. And. We're kind of back into a phase of. Getting it going again. I mean, we had complete plans. We put out an RFP. Got a proposal back from Holly Construction, which was. Unfortunately, did not include prevailing wage. Which kind of disqualified being able to use that reply a year ago. So. That included renovating kind of the area from. The end of the GP room down to the gym. And. It included doing the GP, or the GP room lobby. And what we ended up doing was just doing the GP room lobby. There was some ARCO money the town set aside to do that. And we went, ended up going through this. Process, which I still kind of. That. That. See what happens. I'm trying to. Um, you can see that. I also printed a couple if you want to print a copy. I didn't have time to. I don't know how to make it bigger. Well, basically, so going back to the process we used. Eileen, who was director of parking rec at the time, found this company, Cordian, that does. Project management. But it's also, it has a whole. Process that they went through to become linked up with the state where you can do a lot of work through state contract lists. And not have to go have. It's like a, you know, to put out an RFP, they, everything's been agreed upon on the state contract list. If you want them. An easy thing to replace. You know, nine miles of sewer pipes. And they figure out, you know, they, they actually do a detailed list, you know, how many pipes, how many lengths of pipes, how many connectors, how many elbows, how many whatever. The labor that goes with it, et cetera, all off the state contract list and. They kind of save some time as far as having to put together all kinds of RFPs, et cetera. They did the GP room. They did the um, GP room lobby based on the plans that had already been done by Architects Guild. And. So the bathrooms got renovated, the new family bathroom got put in, the stairs that used to be got taken out, floors redone, painting. Um, new lighting fixtures, things like that. New entry door and new door into the GP room, that triple door that was there. Not at all handicapped, accessible, et cetera. So that was done with some ARCA funds. We actually were quite, quite a bit under budget. We actually added. A good amount into the budget initially, because we weren't sure what we were gonna find when they started taking the bathrooms apart. We, they had already broken some holes in walls, tested, looked for asbestos, like around the pipes and all, didn't find it, which was great. So we didn't need to use all that to do any abatement. The only thing they found was lead paint on some wood baseboard that was there, which they removed in the appropriate manner. No problem. So going back to getting into doing the actual locker room areas. We're looking at using the same process with this group. So Gordian is the project management group. BMP is a contractor in Connecticut and they have, they're on the state contract list to do projects like this. With the GP room lobby, we had a good general idea of what do we need to do. With the locker rooms, we're looking at. Making some changes in the original plans that had been put together to try to create smaller locker room areas. And larger, like a larger classroom meeting space for Park and Rec to do. Classes for adults or for kids, because they have limited space right now. A lot of park and rec programs happen in the schools, but that's all based on the school schedule. There are only a few larger enough spaces here to have uh, classes for kids or adults. So we're looking at having another meeting space, even if it was a classroom space this side didn't have all these chairs in it. You know, might have some weights in the corner. You could have an exercise class in there. You could have, you know, something for kids, whatever. So in looking at wanting to upgrade the plans that we already had from Architects Guild, Architects Guild didn't have the kind of um. Insurance coverage that the town was looking for. We can use their information, but they just won't continue with the process of upgrading the plans or updating the plans. So um. I met with Jay, you came David, right? And a couple of other people to look around and, and someone from Gordian. They can actually put together a proposal, which this is, the email is about um. To have a, somebody, and again, it all comes off the state contract list somehow. To update the plans. So the email is about. Looks like a big chunk of money to update the plans, yet. What they're looking at, what they want, what we need from them is to come up with something. That's completely full construction documents, ready to go, what they call shovel ready. So that we have that in place. And then we can use those to look at how much it's gonna cost to actually do the work. And if we just draw some schematics, which we already have. You have to put some square foot prices on it, but, but that's really not, I wouldn't feel comfortable. Going to the town and saying, we need this much money to do this when we're not really sure. I think we need to be sure. What that, what he's talked about in this um. He says, we may be able to save some time and money if we don't have to, have to have the group. Do a full building analysis for fixture, fixture requirements. So it's been this back and forth discussion that we've had with the building department about. This whole building. And then just working on that area. At how many, and it's, it comes down to how many sinks and toilets. Because you can't just look at that space. You have to look at the whole entire building. And as I said last month, if I'm here, I need to go to the bathroom, I'm going into that one. I'm not going all the way down to the gym. If people are beating or whatever in the gym, they're gonna use the bathrooms there and they're not gonna go. So it's, we haven't been able to get the building department to make a commitment to. How many fixtures they think we are going to need by code. When we do that.
But an analysis must have been done when they redid this. Right? Building.
Yes.
Years ago.
Yep.
It's the code, whatever.
Yeah.
So just that by itself should be.
And again, because I got this.
People.
Yeah.
They want to use it as an emergency area. So now you're talking about a much higher volume of people at those times.
So this would be like a shelter.
So it's been used as a shelter.
Yeah.
Down there. And, and people have actually, for the most part, in, in some more recent emergency situations, people have come here. To charge their devices, to get warm or get cooled, because the, like that August tropical storm we had, you know. Power was out, mine was out for seven days. People actually came and stayed here. They slept on cots. The CERT program has all that equipment, cots, all kinds of other things, and they brought it out during twenty eleven, twenty twelve after. The hurricane Sandy and then the one before, the year before. Whatever. Yeah, I mean, yep. And people stayed here for days. So, but not, not a whole crowded gym full of people, but you don't know. I'm sure they would have to say at some point during an emergency situation, X number of people can stay here, the rest can't. And because the building then would be kept open for business too, because we run on a generator, the generator kicks on automatically. When it did after, uh, actually we didn't lose power after the tropical storm. But other times it just, you don't even know that, you know, power went out somewhere else, power's on here. We never lost power. So there's that to consider. However, just as a building. I'm not sure if we would have to by code say that's a gym and a hundred people can sit in there on the bleachers. Or, which doesn't happen anymore. Even when the kids play uh, basketball, maybe a few parents show up and watch, but it's not a big thing.
No, it, uh, I've been there with the grandkids and there could be at least a hundred, because you have both teams. And you have all the parents and all that, so I would say.
In the gym down here?
You and Matt, I was just saying, I, I, I think summer games is. And then, and then the players and the refs and the coaches, and you're probably over a hundred.
I mean, the bleacher must have a certain capacity, right?
And they took part of the bleachers out.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, they used to be bleachers on both sides. They put one side out, the other side has bleachers. So one of the things is it's hard to get the building department to make a. A commitment to saying, this is the code, this is how many toilets you have to have. We added toilets in the GP room lobby. There used to be one in there, because the men's room was non-functioning. The women's room had one working toilet, the others weren't. Now we got the family bathroom, a couple of toilets in the women's and a couple in the men's with the urinal and. We added a bunch there. So how does that figure in? I'm hesitant to spend a big, you know, so that could be ninety-five thousand dollars. We paid fifty thousand to get the plans done in twenty fifteen, so ten years ago. Yeah, it's gonna cost more, but if we have the plans from Architects Guild, which contains a lot of the information that might be needed by someone else. Architects Guild is fine with us taking those and using them. They just want a bit of a disclaimer that says. Field check everything.
Those.
Yeah, field check, field check everything, please. You know, don't, they don't want to be held responsible if. You know, somebody says this is seven foot six and they go and find out it's seven foot ten and uh-oh, we gotta move something or whatever. So um, I need to talk to Rachel. And maybe we need to discuss it a little further. As far as what the town wants and needs in that area. And again, how can we get to a point where we can go move forward with plans that include the proper amount of fixtures? By code. Doing that without.
Yeah, I would, I would think the building department would, I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's, it, uh, everything you said, I mean, except if I understand when we were in the walk-in, they said, well. At certain times, there's gonna be an abundance. I get that, to figure out what they need in those bathrooms. Alright, that, I don't know what to say.
Yeah.
But Chris, they should be able to say at the highest occupancy.
Right.
This building's X, we need Y amount, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, only so many people can fit in the building.
Exactly, but.
But I haven't been able to get.
Chris said, no, right?
He's been asked and he hasn't given up definite answers.
This is, this is basically their jurisdiction, right? They're the ones approving.
If not, we're paying this company to do.
Yeah, that's.
To drive the stuff.
To, to say.
But also. We could be paying, we could be paying anybody to do, we could pay somebody, you know, fifty thousand dollars. To draw complete construction documents and then we go get a permit and they're like, boop, boop.
Yeah, they sign off it on anyway.
Yeah, well, we wanted two more, you know what I mean?
I mean.
There's no. There's no simple ratio, like uh.
There should be.
Well, there's got.
Yes, yes. Right.
If somebody was building this building, yeah, if somebody was building this building new, they'd know.
Yes, it's calculations, it's based on use, it's based on the multiple uses. And the number of people the building can house at any given time.
Right.
That you have to do the calculations to figure out how many bathrooms would be required.
Yep.
But if it's already emergency use and it already has X amount of bathrooms for that emergency use.
Have you been in there?
No, I haven't.
It was the high school locker room.
I'm just saying, right? If it already fits the thing.
I don't think it, it's, uh, what do they want, what do they say? Existing bathroom form? Yeah.
So if you start ripping stuff apart, you have to bring it up to code.
But I understand, I'm just saying, if there's already, let's say, ten whatever toilets, then if it's already approved for ten toilets for that, then you can't.
We'd like to have less than ten.
But would you already need the same amount of toilets or?
Yeah.
What did, how did Eckhart figure his?
Um, he, I think, used the building codes and he had more toilets in there than. What we were thinking we want to do now, because we weren't doing the GP room lobby. Now that we've added toilets in the GP room lobby. We're thinking we can take some out of the bathrooms that he threw. Makes sense. And he was kind of thinking the same thing, because he did a little quick sketch for us of, you know, we could do this. Cause we were adding some in there or changing where they were. We were gonna have to jackhammer up the floor. To rearrange where everything was, toilets, showers, sinks. And it would be nice to not have to jackhammer up the floor, use the existing plumbing that's in.
Wet wall.
The wet wall, there's a wet wall between the two. It's a called complete plumbing wall, it'd be great, but. Again, we don't know if we can. Cause we were looking at, um, I didn't bring all my sketches, but if there's two, um. Like here's the two locker rooms. This is the wet wall. This is the gym and the front of the building, back of the building. So this was the boys', this was the girls'. And they were just gonna, you know, leave that plumbing wall there, but also jackhammer up the floor, put, because there's like a. Gang shower and toilets and. Just have toilets, I think showers and sinks. Now they're looking at, can we put both locker rooms here just smaller? Cause the locker rooms literally had lockers in them. We don't need lockers.
One of them is being used for storage. I mean, there's racks, it's so huge, there's racks and like. That's just a cage. Open stuff's just in a big cage. Park and Rec uses. What used to be the.
The girls locker.
Side.
Entire.
The whole entire thing, like where the benches used to be, the lockers, all that is all just shelves and everything. And like one on the boy's side. Is just empty. There's a couple of chairs in there, a couple of tables. Oh, is there?
A bunch of theater stuff gets. But the actual, the lockers are gone and Rachel and I were sitting in there and we were going.
They're two huge rooms.
What do we, what do we need all this for a locker room? We don't. If you had both locker rooms here. This could be a classroom, teaching space, whatever. But then all that plumbing gets sealed off, whatever. We still might have to move drains and feeds in this area that have, you know, half of it be. Women's, the other half be men's. Hallway would have to be cut through from this gym hallway. And I, I just, the only way that I want to move forward with this is to have a, a good general idea of. Fixtures and bathroom space of what's really needed before we let somebody loose on it. I want to spend a whole lot of money and then find out they're not enough or they're too many and we don't need them. So I couldn't, like I said, get Chris to commit to.
The showers aren't an issue, right? That's, the showers are discretionary, right? I don't think there's anything that says we have to have.
I don't think.
I think it's. We put two in each in that.
Right. I've asked Tom Gallifer. And he's like, well, there's no real, because he's our emergency management.
Yeah.
Person. And he has said that there's no. Like for an emergency shelter situation, no specific guidelines that say, well, if you can house a hundred people, you need five showers or something like, there's nothing.
Or five toilets, there's the.
I'm just curious, you know, when they had the shelter and the bathrooms in it, did they put some, I mean, I would think you'd put some.
Well, that's.
Just in case.
That's not always the kind of thing you can do in the. Situation.
But there is a, there is a count in terms of number of showers you need to have when you designate a space as a locker room. Or, or, for example, if you have a gym and you're gonna provide showers, then you.
Right.
Making that decision, now you're required to put a certain amount of showers.
Okay.
Locker rooms.
Yeah.
When we went in, he, he said they weren't calling them locker rooms, because they're not gonna be. Leave, it was a while ago that we were all talking about that. The entrances for them are not gonna be off the gym. They're gonna, I mean, you can get through it, they're gonna facilitate a hallway, but it's not.
Designated.
Because they are gonna be used outside of the gym. They're gonna be used for other things. I think they were just calling them like. They had a different name for it. I forget what it is now, but in that meeting, they kept saying they did not call it a rock locker room.
And let's get into the weeds on that, but is, is that specific to use too? So.
Goes back to use. It all goes back to you. So you did, you identify the use and then based on that use. That sets the requirements. X number of men's showers, X number of women's showers, that sort of thing, so.
Right, but if it's a gym for.
You could.
Just youth.
Well.
Does that affect things?
Not so much youth.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that we have to get some more information together about this, and I could forward this email to everyone. Cause again, I. What Jay from BMP had asked of Chris Baldwin was, he asked me first, are there plans that exist for this entire building, which they do. And Chris has them stored electronically and he was able to share them with Jay through like Dropbox or X. There's a lot of stuff. Cause work has been done on this building. You know, back when that was turned into a municipal center, it was done that. And then there's been other little bits done here and there. And the locker room area, not so much over a lot of years. So um, I do wanna, we're gonna ask the town to spend money. We want to have something really specific. As far as what we want the results to be. And so we'll get some more information together. I'll have to talk with Rachel. Park and Rexy, you know, which, and maybe even Dan to see what direction we want to go with this. I'll forward this to everyone. So if you have some ideas, you could.
Is it just Rachel or is it like the Park and Rec Commission too that has said?
No, the Park and Rec Commission, um, when we first started on it, it was basically Eileen. I was going to ask Rachel if she wanted to have a, an ad hoc member of our commission. Pointed from the Parking Rec Commission to help us with this. Because Rachel sees it as, yes, it's space used by Park and Rec, but it's also town space. Which she came forward right away when she became director and met with Dan and me. And said, you know, what's the town need? It's not just parking right space, really, it's town space. So I think it's a good way of looking at it. Park and Rec kind of. Does a lot of stuff in that end of the building and are kind of responsible for it. Each night, there's somebody in the office that. At the end of the night goes through and checks all the doors, makes sure they're locked up, puts stuff away if need be, et cetera. It's kind of like their responsibility. But again, it's not an area only used by parking rackets used by the town for other things. So we want to kind of look at all that, make sure that we cover as many bases as we can. In, I mean, a lot of towns, I've had some, when I was registrar voters, we had some training sessions here for other registrars and election officials. Some of the smaller towns were like, wow, this is a really nice space. You know, they don't have space like this.
Tiny buildings.
Yeah, they don't have meeting spaces like this or, you know, back when we had the town hall across the street, the meeting spaces were. Town was smaller then, but having a space like this has been great. So as I said, I'll forward that and we'll kind of discuss it some more before we. Move forward on making some more decisions on it. See about getting more. Making sure, uh, cause I didn't get a chance to get back to. See about getting more, making sure, because I didn't get a chance to get back to Jay before he was probably out of the office. Once I saw this, um, making sure that they have, have all the information they want with, talking about the group that they're thinking of having do the work or making the plans, and not, you know, MEP structural, everything. Start to finish, to get actual construction documents in place. But to make sure they have all the information that exists, so they're not duplicating efforts. I think it's, that's it on that.
So just the plans within new building analysis with ninety-five thousand.
That's what he says up there. Yeah, that's, um.
We had a full set of.
But it includes building analysis, so this is interesting that, yeah, it would, it would include building analysis to determine what we required fixture counts, concept drawings, architectural, structural, mechanical plumbing, electrical, survey work of existing conditions. And finally, a full set of construction document, documents, ready for bid proposal. So some of this stuff exists, can they, can this company that they're referring us to, again, through state contract? I'll, if I forward the email, you'll see he had attached, and I have time to look at it, um, the company that they're talking about and some of the work they've done. Can't quite see it, um. So, you know, I'm sure they, they've done some work for some schools, they, it'll probably be great, yet. We're not starting from scratch here, we have a lot of information already. Hopefully they can use it, save us a bunch. Hey, anything else, anybody questions or?
So, so can you go to Dan Corrigan and then put some pressure on the building? I mean, the, the power thingy.
If I could just comment real quickly on your, um, you mentioned the, uh, building analysis piece. And that really gets down to the heart of what Chris is struggling with in terms of.
How is the building gonna be used?
Because when you look at the building, we can look at it exactly, you know, with, with blinders on and say, this is the only way we're gonna use the building. And you make a determination and then based on that, you give the fixture count. For the building analysis, what that does is look at the building and look at all the different possible uses that the town might have for that building. And then make, based on all of that, make the recommendation on the account, so, you know.
He's not thinking just with the locker room.
No, no, because you have.
The whole rest.
You can't, you can't, you have to factor in the rest of the town because, you know, if, if you're just looking at the locker rooms, then you're literally looking at it only from the standpoint, it's off of the gym and it's only being used for that purpose. But we know it's not, we know it's also being used for emergency management situations. And, and maybe there are other situations that the town potentially could use that space um, for beneficial purposes, I don't know, you know, what they are, but maybe it's. Yes, before care, before care, daycare, things like that, you've got senior center in the building, so. And Chris, you know, it's up to you as a commission, obviously, to help guide some of what those building uses might be, and maybe, you know, if, if there is a consensus among Dan and the departments and the commission that we want this building to meet these, this list of needs.
Right, 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 which is kind of what Chris said in an email.
He did, I think he sent you.
Yes, Jay, when Jay asked first about the plans and then more specifically, how can we do a fixture count, and Chris said, you can't just look at, we're doing the gym locker rooms here. And whatever else is adjacent, the offices, we have to look at the whole entire building and how the whole entire building is used. And that I understand because there are times when, the biggest thing about doing the lobby, the GP room lobby, which basically was bathrooms, is now, when the town has something out on the front lawn, like Food Truck Friday, the whole entire building can be locked and those bathrooms are accessible. All the other doors can be locked because before, because there was only one toilet in there, they had to open the building up to be able to either that and do porta potties, which they don't always want to do porta potties, they don't want to leave them there, they get, you know, kids get into them and tip them over and all. Having those bathrooms available and locking the rest of the doors so people can't wander through the entire building, even though offices are locked and you still don't want people wandering through the whole building. Isolating that area and having those, anything that happens on the front lawn, there's lots of stuff that happens on the front lawn. That's just one example. I mean, the, the kinds of things that used to happen in the gym, so I was, you know, we had a with, uh, a presentation last night, uh, here at the GP room for any interested people to come and learn about how the town government works, because we're in budget process and people are like, I don't understand why. So it was all presentation, this is how our town government works, this is how we get to the budget, this is how people get elected, this is how people get appointed, that kind of thing. And one of the things I talked about was, I remember as a young person, the town meeting happened in the gym, people showed up in person, jammed into the bleachers, yelling about, you know, the budget's too high, the budget's too low, and then we voted by yelling really loudly, yes or no, I don't know if anybody ever went to those, but that's how that space was used at one point. It's not gonna happen again, we use the high school auditorium, it's more comfortable. But
That kind of thing. Is it the whole use of the whole building, don't you need to just focus on what's the use of that section gonna be? Again.
Yes and no.
Yeah.
You can't because it's not a designated, um, section where, uh, you would literally have to seal it off from the rest of the building so that it can only be accessed from the gym, which can only be accessed from outside. The fact that. And you have to.
You know, for the outside events, if they have to go to bathrooms and stuff.
It's, that's already in place for the, for the outside, we use the GP room lobby and that, and those bathrooms, all the other doors are locked. But the work we're gonna do, just like anything, if you've ever worked on anything that's, you know, not to code, you open up a wall, if it's not to code, you've gotta fix it. If you left the wall closed, you didn't know it was back there.
That's, that's the way the high school is, that's why it's set in sections and now you're, yeah, yeah, like that wall you were, so they were talking about earlier, it's because it was built, so they didn't have, they didn't renovate the whole thing, they just didn't have the. When they renovated, they didn't have to do the whole code on the whole building, just once they had the new section, yeah.
Well, but, you know.
Even if a building analysis is done, are we talking about possible future use of the building or like, you know, who's gonna make?
We can only guess that so far, it's just like, if we were building a building, we can only go so far with guesses.
Right.
I, you know, I built this as my house and somebody buys it twenty years and turns it into a, I don't know.
How do we use this building now?
Yes.
We're adding this one use. It's already a gym, it's already all those other things, the one use that we're really modifying. And I don't even know that we're modifying because it's still a current use. For the shelters, the emergency.
That's what I'm getting at.
So like, that's, to me, that's, that's the only added intended use.
Right.
That's, I mean, if you start snowballing and saying, well, we could use it as an event space or this space, well, yeah, we could do that.
Which was my point. If that's, if that's gonna be just the emergency use section, then shouldn't, that's why.
You can't say that section, what I'm saying is you just have to add one use, we have to. Us, whoever does that.
Building is actually used during.
Yeah.
There are people that hang out in meetings or maybe people that hang out in the GP room.
This is the one function that's now gonna serve in addition to.
Yeah.
If that's even the case, you're saying that's already being used as that.
Yes.
So we don't, there's no added scope, this is how we're using it, this is, that's how it's moved forward. And, you know, how, hey, you know, talk to the building department, be like, when you guys do the walkthroughs in the approval process, are you gonna add anything else or anything you guys want to change? Because we would need to know that upfront, because, like you'd said earlier, the last thing we want to do is we put something in that's saying, well, now we just looked at it from this point of view, so now we need to change that, you know what I mean?
The architect defines, um, the plans, the use or uses.
Yeah.
I think that's what they're asking for, that, they want to know.
That is, yeah, so that's the driver of what code is gonna be adopted based on whatever the architect has defined.
Yep.
Now, I would imagine those original plans, the architect must have worked off some definition.
Yes.
I just don't know if anything's changed or not, and maybe it hasn't changed.
I wonder how much you would cost Architects Guild to put in a commercial insurance policy under.
They don't want.
They didn't, they don't.
Yeah, they don't want it.
I think. They give a lot of residential, which is good, they want to help the town at the same time.
You're not gonna get a set of plans for something of this scale for less than sixty, I don't care, a, any architect
Yeah.
That's gonna do all this work.
With the structural.
Sixteen, with all the structural, everything that they had to be on the hook for, you're not gonna, I mean, that's just. I'm saying, you're looking at like sixty thousand percent of plans for a project like this, the ninety-five, I mean, that could be because of the study, I have no idea, I'm not speak to say I know what gets involved with them doing that study to say what needs to be done.
But it's more of a bigger conversation than for what the pulp building, what the purpose of it is, but they're gonna.
Yeah, and that's why they're charging all that money is because they probably, they're gonna have to
Yeah.
Really dig in and not just look at that section, they're gonna look at the plans and.
Yeah, they're not focused on the locker room.
They have to say capacity of this room, capacity of the propane court, for capacity of the tax thing, they have to look at
Yeah.
Each room individually, I mean, that's a lot of man hours, that's why.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's, again, yeah, it's not just the gymnasium and the locker room, it's the whole bigger picture of this building, which is not just.
And I think that's why.
Unfortunately, it impacts that renovation.
And we gotta get some input from.
BMP is saying, listen, we cut that all out, if we can say, all right, they're gonna look at it from this point of view, see how you guys this much, and they're just gonna draw up the plans based on the plans we have, structural changes, they're just gonna make a set of blueprints and not do that study.
But you have to keep in mind too, that from the architect's point of view, if you that, if you go to him and ask him to do something like this, to, to prepare plans that are gonna best meet the needs of the town, if they didn't go through all of that work and didn't come back to the town and say, these are your, these are the options, or these are the, uh, potential uses that you could have here, and you found out about it later, and you only put in six bathrooms, and if you'd put in eight.
Did it.
You could have opened up a whole new set of use opportunities that the town missed out on.
Yeah.
Because you didn't do it, so from, they're protecting themselves
Sure.
From that, you know, from that, because you've asked them to do it, so.
Yeah. That's why. Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it takes a lot of the liability out, I'm the architect, I'm loving the town saying, this is what we want, this is our use. Okay, that takes all the in.
Yeah, it's a bigger conversation with other people besides Rachel from Park and Rec. What's to do with it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Who has the final say on usage?
Um.
The selectmen?
I It would be probably a lot of input from a couple of different, in that end of the building. So the shelves that you saw in that one locker room that are all full of Park and Rec stuff, years ago, it was all full of books that the friends of the library stored there for when they did their book sales.
Yeah.
So they had to move all their stuff out, because we were gonna do the, we did some abatement in that area and then Parker Rec put all their stuff in, because they have all this stuff that they store, but Rachel said, oh God, we gotta go through this and sort through it, get rid of some. Do they need all what's in there? I don't know, they probably, you know, do some stuff for camp, but then they have a little leftover and throw it on a shelf and maybe it doesn't, I, you know, they're gonna have to figure that out. Because they're not, they need storage, I know that's one of the big things, this parking rep needs is storage for all the different programs they do. Um, they need some space for the preschool program that you mentioned that happens, it's a very popular program, people are always signing up for it. They have a bunch of equipment, I would call it, that they use with the kids, the kids are in the gym, sometimes half the gym, sometimes the whole gym, every day. It's a school-based program where if school's not in session, they're not there, but they have a bunch of stuff that they use. So they gotta have.
Yeah, that would be nice if they could use that room that you spoke about with this sort of general purpose room or something that, you know.
So the GP room is used for.
Not, not the GP room, I mean, you described a room like cut the locker rooms, that where you type this. They could probably use that.
They, they use a lot of space.
Okay.
I mean, if they didn't use the gym, the gym would just be empty. It's not like the gym's gonna get used for something else, they do move if the gym needs to get used for something or something's, work needs to be done in the gym, they'll move to the GP room or they'll move into another space. Rather than cancel, like they try not to cancel it because they try to, they have a whole program they do and kids that come out of that program do really well in school.
They were gonna put a pool there a couple of years ago, they were.
Were they?
Charlie Stick got a grant or, or he, he applied to put a pool in there. No, I'm, I'm just telling you, and then that was next, and then they, you know, the golf course, and then we're gonna do, and then that was next. But Charlie Stick did that. I remember.
Yeah, I don't think they were ever gonna put a pool in there.
No, no, I'm just saying that's what they were, they applied for a grant or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Twenty years, I.
I don't know if that would ever have been a pool, I know people talk about pools that they brought up, wanted to put a pool of a cow or they wanted.
Yeah, I mean, that's, everybody has pools around here in the backyard.
Yeah, I know, so who's gonna pay to go to a town pool, I don't know. Anyways, that's not us. So anyways, I will forward this email, we'll do some more work and searching and discussions, et cetera. Um, because we do have to come up with some sort of a, a plan to bring to Board of Selectment and Board of Finance as far as coming up with funds to, to come up with the plans, it's gonna cost money, so the town's gonna have to pay some money to put into it. Wait till the budget passes, um.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that gonna be put in?
Yeah, no.
No, no, it wouldn't, so it would not be part of, I mean, the budget's set in place to go to the town meeting and vote on, there's no changing it now. It would be a capital expense, because it wouldn't be part of anybody's budget, budget, regular operating budget, it would have to be a capital expense. And, I mean, the, the way the budget is set up, there's, uh, capital non-recurring amount of money that's there to do with however they might need it. Ideally, it would be great to get a whole price for the entire project, plans and the construction, which would probably be more than, you know, would probably trigger a referendum and then you get that all approved, but, because then they would borrow money and pay back all that. Um, I would rather have the plans in place, because if we have the plans in place, there's possibility of grants and such. But you need a complete set of plans that apply for grants. And if it were, if we do go to the Board of Selectment and then Board Finance, there is, like I said, some money in the budget that's earmarked as capital non-recurring, so that's capital projects that come up out of nowhere that might need to get taken care of. Sometimes emergency, a boiler breaks before its time and it can't be fixed and they've gotta replace it. You know, that kind of thing, but they still have to go through the whole process of getting proposals, coming up with the amount, approving it, et cetera. But it's not something that would come out of some department budget or, uh, general fund too.
Yeah, it'd be the same as the project we're talking about with the schools for the HVAC, it's, that would be that same process, right, when that was approved.
So that was approved at referendum based on. It's a capital project, so it was voted on at referendum. The amount that they, that the board had paid for the plans was some money that they had through maybe some Doc Arpro Besser, one of those that they put together to adjust through the plans, they have Colerona, they put on RFP, they hired Colerona to do the plans, once plans were done, then they started doing the phases and this one phase went grant money, when it was I think it was federal down to state, state down to local municipalities for schools. Specifically for HVAC upgrades. Dr. Carver saw that coming and put together with Colerona and I think STV helped with an amount, coming up with a budget amount that went to referendum. And then when the grants became, when the grant applications became available, we applied for a grant, which is covering little, the grant covers a little more than half the project, I think, and the town covers a little less than half. Of the amounts, four million, four point one million, something like that. So that process is a little bit, that's kind of how that goes, most projects go like that. You, you get an architect on board to come up with some schematics and a basic cost through an estimating company for the whole project. You agree at referendum and then you gotta keep the project under that amount.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, this would be the same thing, you're gonna need this, it's not like it's a two hundred thousand dollar project.
But some, but, well, he was saying about the, this amount for getting the plans done.
No, no, I know, but the whole project itself is probably a little billion dollars.
No, that's gonna be lots more, but getting, I mean, even if we were a little ahead of schedule and went with this, let's say this amount to the Board of Finance, it could have been put in as a capital question on the budget, but they didn't do any cap, capital questions this year, which it's.
It's been a challenging thing.
Yes, it has been, so. Yes, it has been, so.
I I may have missed it, but um for the grants, you did, you said we need a set of plans, that's a construction set?
That's what's.
That would be helpful, because we did.
Okay, but it doesn't have to be approved by the town prior to getting.
So here's, here's something that happened. Right, but.
To get the grant.
We applied, the town applied for a steep grant, I can't remember what steep stands for, but for that locker room area. The, well, maybe two years ago. We put together as much information as we had with the existing plans, but some new sketches, a whole bunch of information, we just, that. The grant was like, somebody said, oh, look, steep grant, like in two weeks, we threw this, threw, put it together. Submitted it, we didn't get the grant. And um Janice, Kris Jenick, who does economic development, was working on the grant. She said she found out later that all of the towns that got the grants had already approved some funding for the project. Ahead of time. So there were some matching funds there already. That's a good thing to know, if that's kind of an underlying thing with, you know, just like our HVAC grant. We already approved the money, so the grant's only covering part. That's a thing that we have to look at going forward, we might have to take that up with the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance. Right now, we just, it'd be nice to get plans in place to have them ready to go. So if a grant does come up, we can give a try again. We may have to think about having the town approve some money. But I'm not sure how that would work. We'd have to look into it. Alright, so we'll move on from here. I'll, like I said, send you all this stuff and we'll continue to discuss till we get. Somebody to tell us how they want the building used to be.
Exactly, that's what it comes down to.
Who's gonna take responsibility for that, yeah.
Does the Architects Guild plans exist anywhere that, yeah, we can look at?
I, I'm gonna have to look and see if I still have it on either this computer or somewhere. On down a flash drive, I mean, they they exist, I know they do.
Were they ever part of the meeting?
They might not have been part of a meeting attachment, I'll have to look.
Would be.
I have a paper set, but uh I can.
Would be appropriate if I asked them, because we're actually doing a job with that right now.
If they wanna give it to you, sure, that'd be fine. Now, if you're buds with Peter and he's okay with that, that's fine. But I know I've had some because I know I shared them with different people to be used, as we were trying to move things along a couple of years ago. So, um.
Yeah, if you can't find it, like, easily reach out.
Yeah, I know I had them, an electronic copy, because we used it for a lot of different things when we were putting an RFP together and all. Um, I just have to look and find it, if I can send it as an attachment, I will. So the last thing on our agenda is the police station training range. And I had said at the last meeting how I was trying to find out.
Invoice, right.
If we had an outstanding invoice, and I actually did. I had emailed ESC, that was the company that I was looking to uh find an invoice with.
For the gas line, you mean?
Yeah, for the gas line, and so what I, I never heard back. So I was gonna, you know, try to find out if S, because STV was the owners up there too. And I was trying to. Figure out, was I emailing the wrong people at ESC, whatever, so I just emailed all the people I had emails for at ESC. And that, and I actually did get a quick reply from Rob Preston and he said. Let me check with finance or whatever their accounting department and get back to you. And then not too long after that, I got something from their accounting department with a copy of the invoice that had been paid. It never came through us, it just went directly to finance and they paid it. So, so what I did do was update the, let me see if I can do this now.
We can give ourselves praise, right? You got that extra money?
So, yeah, so we actually, you know, they paid it, but um.
Didn't come out of our budget.
It, no, it did come out of our, I, I didn't ask, well, actually, I asked finance if they had gotten and they said yes and they paid it. So this is a budget, I think I had sent this out.
Yep.
Um, ahead of time. And I still haven't learned how to make things bigger when you're screen sharing.
I have copies if anybody wants.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I sent it out to everyone and I, yeah, so basically, we have about forty five, forty six hundred dollars left in contingency, which is a good thing. So when I, um, when I asked finance too, did you pay this? So they said yes. I said, good, it looks like we only have, you know, we do have forty six hundred left in contingency, that's a good thing, we're gonna close this out. Cause again, I didn't wanna close it out, not knowing if the invoice would show up at some later date, or if. You know, we didn't know how much we had left in contingency. There was actually, the one thing was Signet, the company uh that had given us a not to exceed amount of, I think, ninety eight, seventy. Uh, yeah, that was, it was actually Network Synergy. They had given us a not to exceed amount of um nineteen thirty one and they had actually spent another four hundred doing something they needed to do. So that was the little discrepancy between the contract amount, the paid to date amount. So still, you know, forty six in contingency, that's a good thing. I would suggest that we take it off our agenda, as we're done with it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, good. Alright, now the two things on the agenda, hopefully we can keep shrinking. Alright, so I think that's all I have for tonight. Almost anybody else has either other question for anything else?
Make a motion to say goodnight.
Alright, thanks David. So, and somebody makes the motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Uh, favor, I oppose, done.
Good night, everybody. Have a great.
Thanks, David.